contracted with a gentleman named Peter Prabham who is very well known across the state. Peter can introduce himself and let me know a little bit about his career. He's worked for a long time for the Connecticut State Department of Education. And is now in his retirement, still doing a lot of the work that he did in an official capacity with the State Department, helping school districts develop a pretty comprehensive understanding of what their enrollments are going to look like. So I'm going to let Peter introduce himself. And then when Peter's finished with his report, I'm going to introduce you to our friends from Friar Architecture, who are going to talk a little bit about what those enrollment projections mean in terms of square footage and a number of other considerations that we have to keep in our understanding of as our facilities committee continues to engage in the work of designing a modernization plan for our facilities. So Peter, just as a little housekeeper here, as you introduce yourself, I shared your presentation with a Zoom host here, his name is Dylan. Dylan, can you hear me? He is going to share your PowerPoint on the screen here and otherwise.
Students, four point four percent, you know, to my point, you have pretty low. Statewide, there was a ten point nine percent decline. So you was applying less. Next year, for guiltless leave school, I think it's going to be down about ten students. Peak enrollment for school construction grant is three hundred and fourteen students in 2028. And enrollment will roughly to sixty students in 2024. And by the end of the projection period, three hundred and fifteen, which is less than ten students more than currently. Again, for planning purposes, you guys all read in the paper about the state wanting to offer more opportunities for Hartford students in suburban schools. So let me talk about Fulton Choice. Here it would apply in your planning purposes across all grade levels in all schools. This year, you had sixty low students in October first, which added four point nine percent of your student, uh, total enrollment. My model that I built was.
That you would continue to stay above four percent. I believe you get a little bonus from the state at greater than four percent. I don't know whether the state will change that and make, uh, make a bigger bonus if you go to five, six, or seven percent. I think we can anticipate that. I think you probably should work through your representatives in Hartford on that one as what it might mean. I've got you in my model of accepting, I think I, um, you accept four in kindergarten for the next five years and five in kindergarten for the twenty seven to thirty one period. That will give you over the next ten years somewhere between fifty one and fifty nine kids and keep it above four percent. This obviously can be an opportunity to, if you're doing a school construction project to more kids involved. I mean, even if you're talking one, two, three, four students at a school, that translates into money for you guys. So that's another thing to think about. Grade five and six, the brownstone intermediate school that declined from two hundred and forty five students in two thousand and eleven to one ninety three in two thousand and nineteen. And it rebounded to two oh six in two thousand and twenty one. Not sure why this rebounded. One of the other things we'll, I'll show you a little later is that the number of kids attending area magnet schools declined pretty significantly. You know, I'm not sure what the advantage of attending a Hartford magnet school if you're not on site. And so I don't know what's going to happen to that. It's another area of great uncertainty in the projections. And obviously, if, if they come back, that might change your enrollment. I think it could, it could drop it a little from what's projected. Statewide, um, you got, well, you lost thirty nine students over ten years, sixteen percent roughly. Statewide in grade five to six, there was a ten percent, ten point four percent decline. I'm projecting basically no change. Next year, school construction grant maximum of two hundred and seventeen students. That's in two thousand and twenty four. Could be close to two ten, um, in thirty one. And it could dip to as low as one, uh, roughly seventy in two thousand and twenty six. Basically, no change between twenty one and thirty one. It's going, the projection, I'm averaging two hundred students. And the past ten years, you've had two thousand, or two hundred and twelve student average. The middle school, grade seven to eight, enrollment peaked at two hundred and fifty students in two thousand and thirteen. And by two thousand and twenty one, it was down to one ninety seven. It was a decline of, uh, loss of thirty three students or fourteen percent. Statewide, there was roughly a ten percent loss in that period in those grades. No change next year, peak two hundred and sixteen for a school construction grant in, uh, two thousand and twenty six. After going for that grant, don't panic, enrollment will decline around one hundred and seventy in two thousand and twenty eight and be roughly around two ten in two thousand and thirty one, which is roughly ten to fifteen students more than you have in the school today. High school. Started out the period three sixty, got to a high of three ninety one, down to three thirty two this year, this October. Next year, I think it's going to be down roughly fifteen students. School construction peak, three forty in twenty eight and back down to three ten in two thousand and thirty one, which is roughly twenty students less than today. All right, if we look now at what's causing all of this. Here's, I'm going to be talking about births in your town. Nineteen eighty to two thousand and twenty six. You started out the period at eighty births, bumped up to one hundred and twenty six births in nineteen ninety three. And you got down to a low of sixty four births in two thousand and thirteen. Here's an idea of, um, just, just a major demographic change there. It's having roughly the number of births in your town. There were ninety, um, in two thousand and twenty, which is the last provisional count. I based your projection, um, when I did it, which was a little, a couple of months ago, on births through September. I estimated in, there would be eighty five births in twenty one. Since then, um, I've got updated data from the state. There were eighty six births in two thousand and twenty one. Now, that does make a, could make a, a difference in, in your, in your planning. I mean, that's one birth more, one birth more than the report. And again, if you think about two, three, or four grades in a school, it could add up to, again, a half dozen more kids in a particular school once we, you know, lock this in, when you get your planning all done. Uh, give you an idea, um, in the period two thousand, two thousand and nine, there was an average of a hundred and three births annually. You wonder why your kindergarten class, classes changed? Well, there's an average of eighty two births between two thousand and twelve and two thousand and sixteen. And that period is this year's kindergarten through fourth graders. On the positive side, it looks like births are going to be up in the two thousand and seventeen through twenty one period. That's pretty much locked in, averaged eighty eight. So that's six more per year than, um, current K through four was based on. And the projection in the years twenty seven through thirty one is based on ninety births annually. Right, so when you have births, then you have a five-year interval between before, between then and when kids start to come to school. And, um, and so I look at births and subsequent kindergarten enrollment. There are some parents who hold their kids out until they're six years old. Um, I look at the birth cohort and I look at how many kids total come from a particular birth cohort. It's a little different than standard cohorts survival. I like it better and in towns where parents do hold their kids out, it's, um, I think it can be a better model. Uh, one thing that happened is you did change to full day kindergarten in two thousand and twelve, I believe. Somewhere right around there. And then you look at your birth cohorts and, um, I mean, this drives a projector crazy. What you're looking for is consistency. And we have consistency well in two thousand, the two thousand and twelve birth cohort. Most of those kids entered kindergarten in two thousand and seventeen. Um, there were fewer kids in kindergarten than, than were born two thousand and twelve. And then the very next year, for some reason, it jumps up to a hundred and thirty one percent. Drives people like me crazy. The last year, we have a full data was two thousand, birth cohort of two thousand and fifteen. You had roughly the same number of kids in kindergarten emerging from the birth cohort, five percent more. Two thousand and sixteen is an estimate because we won't know how many enter as six-year-olds. Two thousand sixteen is an estimate because we won't know how many enter as six year olds. Um, until next uh October, roughly ninety seven percent. Um, and then this is, I mean, this is a five year interval, remember, between births. And schooling, so it's pretty good. Um, and my model is based on um ninety two percent growth from birth five years ago. Twelve percent of births um of from birth six years ago. And you do retain a few students, so three point four percent of students retained. Um. Alright, so grade to grade growth, the next slide. And what this is, is this is taking a look at enrollment. Um, from one grade, one year to the next grade, the next year. And if things are happening town and people are moving in. If there are um people moving into existing homes, if there are new homes being built. If there are even senior housing being built. You will um see an increase in um enrollment from grade to grade. So one year, you might have, let's give an example, ninety two first graders this year and ninety four second graders next year. That's a positive growth. Um, and I took. The last two years and pretended. That the homeschooled kids, and these are kids who withdrew. They were enrolled in your schools and then decided, parents pulled them out during COVID. So I think these kids are in the future going to be um Portland school kids. Well, I put them back in there in the model and that should uh raise the the growth rates a bit. Um. I use the five year average of the adjusted growth rates for the projection. Um, the more years you use, the more stability uh and the more things it takes into account. That's happened over in the town. I look at grades two to twelve over um the average rate of growth for the projection. It was point nine nine zero, which is a slight um. Loss of kids, if you think about what happens in grade nine, that can explain a lot of that loss. Otherwise, as you look at the Xs in the model, they're pretty much above one. Which is an indication of in migration. Um, two thousand and twenty one, the rate was a little less than that nine nine oh, point nine eight four. And the median over the past twenty years was nine eight oh. So I've got a multiplier in this projection that's slightly higher than we've observed over the past um several years. Um, now we're gonna look at contributing factors, so what's going on around us? Um, uh around town and around the state. This is from the census. Your population growth between two thousand and ten and twenty, you guys know this, was minus basically one point four percent. Uh, your population declined to a hundred and twenty four people. Um, that loss was eighty seventh ranked in the state among a hundred and sixty nine towns. So that's roughly, pretty much a typical loss. Um, for the state of Connecticut. Hartford County grew um by point eight. Um, well Hartford County grew by point six one, the state grew by point eight nine of a percent. And similar communities to yours um declined two point five four percent. Uh, the next slide. Net new housing units, alright, so um. Alright, very new, very few housing units have been built in in Portland for the past, uh over the past several years. Um, so this would include condominiums and this would include um. Single family houses. Over the past five years is which we're looking back at in our enrollment history, there was an average. Of five new houses per year. So basically, in our projection, we're not assuming very much housing growth in town. Um. Can, uh, uh, alright, I'm I'm getting no comments back. It's, is everybody else muted or?
I actually, I have a question, Peter. I'm wondering if you took into account the Elmcrest property? Or the possibility of new properties being built on Cox Road?
Uh. Didn't hear about the Cox Road one, the the Elmcrest site. Um. Actually, I had Charles on, I think Charles looked into that. And let me, let me turn it over to him on that.
Yeah, I I had a conversation with Dan Bertram. Um, Dan told me that the majority of the units going in, particularly in phase one, are studio and one bedroom apartments. Um, his experience with similar developments specifically in Brookfield is that. The the studio and one bedrooms won't bring in many students, if any. Um, the second phase has some two bedroom apartments. Um, and again, his experience in Brookfield is that. Two bedroom apartments don't bring in an awful lot of students, but he said the number twenty five over K through twelve is is. Conservatively speaking and based on his experience with, again, a similar project in Brookfield, what we could expect. Um, I did not, I'm not aware of the Cox Road development. I'm not sure if if anybody else on this call hasn't. And any insight into how many houses are going up on that or or, you know. You know, where else there might be similar developments?
Charles, it's eleven houses.
Right, can I jump in? I talked to Mary Dickerson after I did the Rivercog um housing uh webinar. And um basically asked her about whether or not these developments are figured into um school enrollments. And she said that there was a very conservative approach to the um Brainerd Place development, that they were um. Uh, not trying to impact the schools by bringing in thirty or forty um people. So they limited the number of two bedroom um studio and one bedrooms. And the plan was really designed for young professionals to come to Portland. Love the town and build and buy homes here uh in the future. So um they didn't see the impact. And the eleven houses on Cox Road were approved um building lots, but um there's no um. There's no real uh design plans or, again, the impact would probably be minimal. And I did speak to Mary because um that was a concern of mine that that had not been addressed. The other thing is Rivercog um also proposed uh probably in Middlesex County alone, not more than two hundred houses per year. Being built uh because the um area is not uh, it's not abysmal, but it's not growing at the rate. That some of the other uh areas in um Connecticut are growing. For instance, um Fairfield County um has a lot of growth and a lot of um new, new uh families. So um it's conservative in that respect.
Yeah, one of the, one of the things when you're looking at the projections too is. Um, the projections include, assume roughly five new houses per year. Um, so when someone says they're building ten, the net impact is 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 five. Um, the other thing is um houses just don't pop up overnight usually. It's gonna take them, if there's a development, I don't know if they can build in this climate, ten houses in a year, maybe they can. But it might take um a a bit of time between the the planning permits and the certificates of occupancy. So.
Right, cost of building materials too is gonna affect whether or not eleven houses get built in the next um two years, probably not. And that was the other point that Mary made, um just cost of construction right now is astronomical.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not um. I'm not too, I mean. Twelve to twenty kids spread uh spread over thirteen grades. Um, wouldn't impact anything in Friar's design, quite frankly. It might make a difference in, you know, how much reimbursement we could get from the state. Um, but uh it's it's that that's, there's no two or three hundred unit development that's anybody, anybody's planning there right now. Alright, let me um, if if we're okay. Uh, estimated single family and homes and condominiums. This is the trend over the past ten years. Um. The model and the growth that is built into the model. Um, assumes there will be uh roughly a hundred and twenty six sales annually. So when we see an enrollment growth or a decline, even whatever we have. Um, this is already built in, so the sales of a hundred and twenty six annually are pretty much assumed. Um, I projected there would be a hundred and forty sales in two thousand and twenty one. I think I just got the number, um, a hundred and forty two sales in two thousand and twenty one. Um, if anybody, I don't do any models which goes and predicts housing sales. I mean, I think we all know what's happening to the price of 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 building materials. We all know it's happening to the price of land and we all know, well, there is talk that. Um, mortgage rates and interest rates, well, they're not gonna go down any further. So I would expect um this number. I I wouldn't expect a major change and a major influx from sales of single family homes and condos. Uh, non-public school enrollment. Um, this is a little interesting because most dist- districts I work with. Show a, just a slope downward from two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twenty one. Um, you guys for the first, you know, eleven to fifteen, were hanging right in there. And then um this year, you even had a bounce back. Um, I'm not sure, I I I don't look at withdrawals to go to private school. Um, I'm a little surprised that the numbers up in in two thousand and in twenty one. Um, resident enrollment in other public schools. Um. You had a, uh, this is the, all the opportunities kids have to go elsewhere. This can include um tech schools in grade nine through twelve, include um. Uh agricultural science centers in nine through twelve, include magnet schools. Um, sometimes schools have arrangements um for special ed kids to go somewhere else. This includes everything. Your peak um was a hundred and two students in two thousand and thirteen, dropped to seventy four. Um, last year and bounced up to eighty two. Now, the interesting one is the charter magnet schools. There obviously was a growth in the early part of the period of. Um, the decade thirty seven, it got up to seventy one kids. And then last year, it just plummeted from down to thirty three. I mean, look at the the numbers um from nineteen, uh two thousand and seventeen down to two thousand and twenty. And then even this past year, it it declined um a little more. Um, in two thousand and twenty one, you had thirty kids in magnet or charter schools. Six in the Ag Science Program, forty six at a state technical high school and two. In another public school. Um. Now, one of my assumptions here is that decline going to magnet schools. Um, that's, that would tend to increase your enrollment. Um, in the elementary grades. Whether that comes back, geez. Uh, it's too soon to call, it's too early to call. I don't, I don't have a a clue as to what's gonna happen there. Um, open choice enrollment in Portland schools. Um, back in two thousand and eleven, you had eleven students in there. It peaked in two thousand and nineteen at sixty seven, dipped last year and this year had um sixty one. And on the positive side, in the past ten years, you're up um fifty students. And the projection modeling, and this brings kids in, was um. Check the number of, sufficient number of kindergarten students per year. Um, so that you will retain an enrollment of at least four percent. I believe there's a state bonus at that level. And between twenty two and thirty one, this model assumes an average of fifty five students from Hartford. Um. I'm guessing there's going to be some subtle pressures on you um from the state to increase that. And that would be something. Where if you wanted to get some additional reimbursement money, uh that might be a vehicle just to. To take a few more students, maybe go back to the sixty one you had before and um. Make the state happy and make you citizens happy getting a few more bucks for reimbursement. Um, estimated student migration, what I do is I um, I look at school, um. I try to get town migration here. Um, and it exclude, it includes everybody going to public schools. So we factor out the increase in in the Hartford kids coming. Do you factor out the kids that you have going to um other public schools? And these are the numbers you see, you've been as high as two point five percent. And in twenty one, uh you were as low as one point two percent. The average over the seventeen to not twenty one period is plus uh point six four percent. Twenty year median is point six eight. So um, the projection is based on. You know, pretty close to the twenty year history. Um, how accurate are these things? That I do, well, sometimes they're good and sometimes they're bad. And and right now, if you think about this, this has got two projections. The last projection I did for you guys was in two thousand and eight. And I don't know where I I dug that up. I think I, it was this projection I did when I was back at the state. Um, and you can see how accurate that was. Um, it's four point six percent low over ten year span. Um, now that's absurd. And I'm not promising that for the next ten years. Um, that's absurdly good. If you think about it, it's before you guys introduced full day kindergarten, which should uh increase your enrollments. It's before you expanded open choice, which should increase your enrollments. It's uh before the great growth in magnet schools, which decreased your enrollment. So those things weren't built into that two thousand and eight projection and yet. We came within four point six percent over ten years. Um, that that's, that that speaks more to the consistency. Of um things going on in Portland than um the method. That that's, that's pretty good accuracy rate for um the model. So let me minimize this now so I can see. Who is going to be asking any questions? I've stunned you, oh. Sorry. I mean, I'm not, I'm not. Nothing's through.
I I have a question and it goes back to a couple of uh at the very beginning. And I don't know that you have an answer, but I know um you allude to um events that um would drive changes to enrollment. And also to um births and and um decline in um, you know, aging population and all of that. But you said um back at the very beginning, and um this is on page two, and I just, I'm I'm not sure what it means. And I just, I'm, I'm not sure what it means. You said the subsequent enrollment gain in the Portland school during the. 1971 to 1990 decline was slightly longer and deeper than the states. But that our gain was more robust. Can you account for what that means and, you know, what influenced that? Because then in the second cycle, we did see more of a decline than the state had. And that's on page, the bottom.
Yeah, all right, so now we're going back 50, 40 years.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering what, what the cause was back then, if, if you can pinpoint it.
My data goes back there, but my mind doesn't.
Okay, okay, fair enough, fair enough.
I mean, if you think about what's going on then, let me see, back then was pre-open choice.
Right.
It was pre-magnet schools. It was pre, pretty much. Full-day kindergarten, which would have drawn some more kids in. It was. You know, it, it just, it just might be randomness of the age of your population and when they were having kids. I mean, every town has a little bit bitter, a little bit of a different distribution there. And that could account for it.
Right. And the other question I have is, do you see? Immigration, you know, people moving in from a variety of countries into the area impacting our enrollment? You know, if there's anything that Portland is doing proactively to invite families from other countries to come and live in our community. In addition to the open choice kids. Is that impactful in terms of our enrollment and would that change any of your projections?
You know, the only place I have seen that. Is Rocky Hill. And. And so I'm going to answer that. Maybe, and what we saw on Rocky Hill was. And I'm not that familiar with immigration. But the engineers at Pratt getting a visa to come over here and, and work at Pratt. And. A lot of them settled in Rocky Hill. I don't know the exact commute between you and East Hartford. Where Pratt is. Asking anybody an immigration question these days can get you into hell of a fight. I, I don't know how, I don't know how that's going to, how that's going to break out. I mean, I, I, I mean, if we were talking politically in the US. There's other things I would have expected would have gone further. In this administration's agenda and I'm not sure where that one fits in. So you're going to be a national hostage on that one.
Hi, I had a question on the increase in. Agriculture and tech enrollments over the last few years. Is that a trend that you've seen in other areas as well?
You know, it depends on the community. I'm just, I'm just finishing up a projection for Stafford. And they have a lot of kids go to tech. My personal view. Is that. Tech. Will increase. That the number of kids going to tech schools will increase. My guess is. That we will get a new tech school in Wyndham one of these days. It might get caught up in all the politics that you've been reading about in, in Hartford. I'm not sure of that. And the override, one of the, one of the statistics that people don't realize. Is there's roughly a 40 to 50% dropout rate in college. And you read a lot about kids there. You know, acquiring a lot of debt and not having work. So my guess is the tech schools will be drawing a lot more kids away. And my guess is Portland would be the type of community that they would.
Peter, did we lose you? You, you cut out.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, we got you, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Well, let me speak and emcee this here. Does anybody else have any other, other questions, maybe unmute yourself or otherwise. We can move on to round two of our, our discussion tonight.
Charles, I'd just like to thank Peter and reinforce what he said about Rocky Hill. I had worked there for many years and I know that there was an influx of engineers that did come from India. And, and they kept on hiring more and more. And of course Pratt, when he does have a plant in India. So there was a reciprocal type of a program that was going on. And that number did grow a lot and it's still growing and it keeps growing. By the, by the 50s and hundreds, so that part is very true. But that's a different case than in Portland, obviously. I just like to thank Peter, I think he's did a great job. I, it's all this information is something that's very pertinent to reimbursement and also to plans for the future. So Peter, thank you very much.
You're welcome, Charles has my number. When you guys, you know, make a decision on what you want, we can, we can start, we can tweak some things. And we can see if we can make some reasonable assumptions about getting you a few more kids. I mean, that's about the, the pre-K and where you want to go there, that's one assumption. And the assumption on open choice. So, and the additional births. That would give you a couple more kids. So if you were, we, we can get, I think we can get you a couple more bucks legitimately. So Charles, you have my number, won't cost you guys much. Guarantee you'll make more money than you'll, you'll spend. How's that?
Excellent, Pete, Peter can't, can't thank you enough. I know you are, you are in Utah and enjoying some retirement time. You're, you're welcome to stay on for the second part, otherwise I do know how to get in touch with you if anybody.
Is that, is that Michael?
Mike, Mike, yep, he's coming up next, yes.
Oh, yeah, I'd, I'd like to listen to that for a little bit.
Great, wonderful, wonderful. All right, so.
I, I was wondering if I could ask a question, please?
Sure.
I, I think this kind of doesn't really relate to the data that was presented. But my, my question would be, what is the position on the town? How eager are we to, to get more than the 61 students from the surrounding area? What benefits do we see to the town as far as versus the financial incentives? What is the gains and what is the, the losses that we see? Surely it's not a win-win.
Brian, was, was that a question for Peter or that sounded more like a question potentially for me and the board event?
Correct, yeah, for, for the, for more for the board. Peter presented the data, which is, you know, that, that's just the straight facts and the, the trends that he's projecting. But I hear a lot of talk about trying to increase the number to lower the burden on the town. Totally get, you know, if you don't have a child in school, you'd rather pay less money in tax and whatnot. But that comes with a trade-off, right? So for the people that have children in school. You know, what do we see from the trending from the past? Is it, is it a gain? Is there any issues that could arise with increasing that number? You know, I think that's more for the, the board and the, the people that have that history.
Sure, so, so I, I, I think what you're, what you're asking specifically is about the, the relationship we have with open choice. And whether there are plans to increase the numbers of, of open choice students? Is that, is that, was that the, the crux of the question there, Brian?
Yes, so if we plan to increase, you know, for a financial incentive. Have we looked at what are the, what are the gains of that besides financial? Is there any impact on the student education that are residents?
I tell you what, Brian, let, let, let me mull that question a little bit. Maybe that would be something I, I could, you know, talk to separately. There's, there's a lot nested within that question in terms of, of the benefits. Of, of having Hartford students attend our schools. You know, we, we do have a longstanding relationship with, with open choice. And, and as Peter did mention and is accurate. That as a function of the recent chef settlement, we have been asked to increase our numbers. And, and contribute more, more seats. And, and open more seats for, for Harvard students. You, you know, the, the, the impact of that, which I heard you ask about. What is the impact of that on our resident students? I, I don't know that I have any data anecdotal qualitative or quantitative that I could, could point to, to share with you. So I want to, I want to unpack that question a little bit more before I, I, I commit to an answer.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay, so I will, I will certainly reflect on that. Maybe I'll talk to you offline, get a sense of, of, you know, how to, how to frame a response to that. But I do want to make sure that, that you have an answer to that. All right, so I'm looking at the time, it's eight o'clock. I'm excited now to introduce to you Bryce and Mike. Who are, are the folks we are, have consulted with or contracted with to provide some, some architectural consulting services. Their firm is Friar Architecture. They have seen this presentation already, they are aware of, of Peter's report. And they've now used this data to start to give us a sense of what the current and projected enrollment portends. In the context of square footage in, in our existing facilities. And how we consider that square footage in the long run. So I, I spoke with Mike today, I, I know what he's going to present to you. I know that, and this is a very important first step in helping us understand. What the data that Peter presented to us means in terms of the work that the facilities study committee is engaging in now. So Mike and Bryce, I'm going to turn this over to you. Dylan, I emailed you their slide deck. If you want to throw that up on the screen for everybody to see. And then Mike and Brian, as you introduce yourselves and get us started. Feel free to shout out to Dylan who can hear you when, when you'd like him to advance the, the slide deck.
Sure, thank you, Charles.
I guess while Dylan's pulling that up, I'll just give a quick overview of what we're going to go over tonight. Quickly, it's going to be, Bryce is going to present where we are progress-wise in the overall report. He's going to go through how this, how the space standards relates to the enrollment projections that Peter just went through. Then I'm going to jump in and talk about the different types of projects and the different types of reimbursements. How enrollment projections affects those. And how that's going to plug into the overall report that we'll be delivering. Okay, so Bryce, I'm going to hand it off to you.
Thanks, Mike, you can head to the next slide, please. So as Mike had mentioned. We're currently working closely with the town to take a look at the existing facilities. As part of the existing facility study that we're putting together for you. I'm just going to give you a quick update on where we stand with that. And then we're going to move into some office of school construction grants and review analysis of the information that PETA. Peter, Mr. Prada had just presented to us, so it's going to be a nice tie-in. So as I mentioned, currently we've been working closely with the town. Friar Architecture has surveyed all of the buildings in town, that's all five of the schools. We've been working closely with our two consultants, E2 Structural Engineers and CES as Consulting Engineering Services. They're kind of following us, moving through the buildings. E2 has surveyed all the buildings, they have all their surveys complete and CES is partially complete. I would say they're about 50% through that process. As far as producing our reports, we're taking all that information that we're gathering from our visits to the schools. And putting them into a written and graphic format for you. As far as Friar Architecture stands, we are at about 30% complete on putting all that information into the report. E2 is at about 25% complete writing their reports and CES is at approximately 10%. We anticipate that by the time we meet with you folks next month or whenever that may be. We will have the reports fully completed for you and ready to hand over to you. Next slide, please. Next slide. Thank you. So this slide here segues directly from what Mr. Prada had just presented to us. What you're looking at is four different calculations of allowable square footage at your facilities. I think it's important to point out that from the state's lens, how they look at this, they look at this facility by facility. They look at each facility separately as opposed to a district as a whole. You're only going to see four calculations here of square footage. Because the last time the high school, middle school was worked on, when the middle school edition was created. That was presented to the state as a Portland secondary school. So I just wanted to point that out, that up in the upper left-hand side there is your middle school and high school. Because through the state's lens, that's how they last looked at it. What we do is we take the information from Mr. Prada. And we, again, we look at it through the Office of School Construction Grant and Reviews lens. And what they do to define the allowable square footage in schools is give you this Excel spreadsheet. Where you input the number of students per grade. It tallies those numbers up to a total, I'm going to use the Portland Secondary School as a talking point here. It'll add up all of the students enrollment in that school. Calculate the allowable square footage per school. So you can see in that upper left-hand side, you have a square foot per student on the bottom. Middle school at 151 square feet per student. And right below that is 187 square feet per student for the high school. It multiplies that by the number of students and then tallies it down at the bottom for your total allowable square footage. Which for the secondary school comes out just under 90,000 square feet. One of the most important things that we're going to keep in mind and we're going to make a point. It's a point you're going to hear numerous times throughout our discussions with the town is. Your allowable square footage equals your reimbursable square footage. Okay, so again, through OSCGR's lens, allowable equals reimbursable. You are allowed to build over your allowable square footage that the state defines. But you will not be reimbursed on any square footage above that allowable amount. It's, it's a very important point to make as we look at multiple scenarios and different scenarios moving forward with the town. So just very quickly, you see your Portland Secondary School is at a current allowable of just under 90,000 square feet. Valley View School is at an allowable of 21,600 square feet. Brownstone is an allowable of 28,324 square feet. And Gildersleep is at 38,375 square feet. And this is by your current, current enrollment of 21. Next slide, please.
Bryce, just to let you know, the moderator just told me that the PDF is moving a little slow on their end. So it's just, it's taking them a little time to scroll up, so.
No problem, thank you. So what, what we've done here is we've taken these four facilities. And you can see you have up top is your current enrollment. And on the bottom is your projected enrollment. If you follow the lines across, we have enrollment is your number of students in each school. Current square footage is the actual size as it stands right now of these facilities. And next to that is your allowable square footage according to the state's calculations. Next to that is your percentage of allowable square footage. As you can see, as it currently stands, each of your facilities is over the allowable square footage in the state's perspective. And next to that in the red is the number of square feet that you're actually above that allowable square footage. I had mentioned before that you look at this facility by facility. But just to put it into a different perspective, we have totaled these up. So as it currently stands, the district is 173,000 square feet over the. So as it currently stands, the district is 173,000 square feet over the allowable square footage. Now, if you look at the bottom table, we just used Mr. Proud as projected enrollment for 2031 to give you a comparison to how, to where we stand right now. So his projected enrollment does increase the projected amount of students in the district, but it doesn't put much of a dent in the allowable square footage for each of the facilities and the district as a whole. There's only about a 6,000 square foot delta between the two numbers, meaning that yes, enrollment is projected to go up over the next eight years, but it's not going up to the point where it makes the size of your square, the square footage of your facilities adequate for the amount of students that will be in it. It's only dropping it by a ballpark of 6,000 square feet. Next slide, please. So what we've put together here on this slide is a, just a visual representation of the allowable square footage, which you can see in kind of the magenta color for each of the facilities as compared to the actual area in the maroon square footage of each existing facility. In terms of being in the ballpark, Gilder Sleeve is closest to the actual capacity of the school, actual enrollment in the school versus what the state would allow. You're only about 9% over square footage of what the state would allow for that facility. As we move on to some of the other facilities, there is a larger disparity in the allowable area against the actual existing physical square footage of each facility. Next slide, please.
Okay, I guess I'll jump in here. So again, Mike's around with Friar. So we put this slide together. I'm gonna talk about now what Peter's put together and what Bryce has put together and, and how this is gonna affect on how we're gonna look at different scenarios on how the, the district could potentially be laid out in the future. A couple of the other factors that play into that aside from, from enrollments. And we look at enrollments because it determines eligible eligibility and ineligible ability of costs. The other things that affect that reimbursement rate are project type. So there's multiple, multiple project types and some are considered priority projects and some are considered non-priority project. The non-priority projects would be things like roofs and oil tank removals and window replacements. And the priority projects are the bigger projects, which would be new, a new school. It could be a renovate is new. It could be additions to the school, which they call extensions, and it could be alterations to the school. And all of those have different meanings. I know a lot of you know this, but for the people that don't, I'm gonna kind of bring you up to speed on, on how, how the reimbursements work. So the project type will be applied and we're gonna look at different scenarios. And in the end, what's gonna come out to is we're gonna have a project cost. And from that project cost, we're also gonna have what is the cost to the town of Portland? And how much is the state gonna pay out of that, out of that cost? So, so as a, as a straight-up alterations project, you're gonna take certain things that are gonna be eligible for reimbursement and certain things that are gonna be ineligible for reimbursement. And you could see this form SCG 1020. That's a list of ineligible items and really to just kind of place a matrix over that. It's anything that's considered maintenance is not reimbursable under an alterations project. So anything that's called replacement or refurbishment, you know, taking out ceiling tiles and putting, putting new ceiling tiles back in, replacing light fixtures, these kind of things are not reimbursable projects. Reimbursable are not eligible for reimbursement. I would say that when, when looking through the, the overall Gordian Report, you know, 80% of those costs, actually it's considerably more than that, are ineligible for reimbursement under the project type alterations. So out of the $28 million that was projects, about 4.9 million dollars of it was code and accessibility related projects. So those were the things that would be eligible. The rest of it would be ineligible under that project type. There's a project type called renovation. It's called renovate is new. So what you do with a renovate is new is you get a special status from the state that the state will reimburse all of those ineligible items. If you get the status and what they do is they'll let you know, you, you can't just do the, the ineligible items. You can't just go through and replace the ceiling tiles and the floor tiles. You have to renovate the entire facility as if it's new. So a renovate is new project is gonna cost more than an alterations project, but a lot more of it is reimbursed. I mean, a lot more of it. So we can look at different scenarios that are alterations and just, just hitting that list of things that were, were shown in the report. Or we can look at renovating the entire building as new and we'll be able to determine the cost locally, what, what, what you're gonna pay in Portland versus what you're gonna get reimbursed from the state. Then new construction, you've got to construct, actually, if we can go to the next slide, I'm gonna talk about new construction a little bit. So the, the district has two reimbursement rates for school construction projects. Dylan, if you can scroll that up, that'd be great. So you have two reimbursements rate, right? One is for new construction and one of the reimbursement rates is for, for general construction. And you can see Portland there, it's highlighted in yellow. Portland's reimbursement rate for general construction is 51% and for new construction, it's 41%. Those percentages, the, the reason that the new construction percentage is lower than, than general construction is they had decided quite a few years ago now that they were gonna encourage renovating buildings as opposed to building new replacement buildings. So they lowered the percentage by 10% for new construction. What ended up happening is a lot of these renovations ended up costing more than new construction because of the, the quantity of PCBs and hazardous materials that needed to be abated before the buildings could be reoccupied. So there's a little caveat to that new construction. If, if, when you do this study, very similar to the study you're doing with us right now, we show that new construction is actually less expensive than the renovate is new. Then they will increase your new construction reimbursement rate up to match the new construction, general construction. So up to 51%. So alterations, it's, you're, you're picking through the, the individual little projects from the initial Gordian Report you got and a lot of that stuff's not reimbursable. Extensions are if the building's too small, we have to add an addition. Renovate is new. You'll get the full 51% reimbursement, but you have to renovate the entire school, not just the things that you perceive as, as the problematic areas. And new construction is at a lower rate. There are other limited ineligible costs. The other ineligible costs are things such as, of course, the space standard overage. So if, if we are way over, the existing building is way bigger than the, the average student square footage allowable, then you're gonna be penalized for that overage. So if, if a building is 100,000 square feet and you're only eligible to reimburse 50,000 square feet, you're going to take a, a 50% reduction in your reimbursement rate. So your 51% would go down to 26% reimbursement rate based on the space standard overage. If something is a maintenance item, it does not get reimbursed. If it's an off-site improvement outside of the property line of, of the building, so you're bringing utilities up the road, those kind of things don't get reimbursed. And in the last couple of years, they've basically taken things that they consider disposable technology, furniture, fixture and equipment has made them ineligible for reimbursement as well. So the reason we're bringing that up this week and not when we start doing the scenarios is you're gonna see when we do a scenario, we'll do a cost estimate, then we're gonna tell you what was eligible for reimbursement, what was ineligible for reimbursement and let you know what the cost to the town of Portland is going to be and how much of the grant we believe the state is gonna pay for. And these will be greatly affected, not only in the, the way the scenarios work, but how much square footage the buil-, the buildings are to, to make that happen. If I forgot anything, Bryce, that we talked about, fill it in. Otherwise, I think at this point, we could open it up to questions knowing that next month, we're gonna come here with our existing conditions report, which should be pretty much done. And we're gonna have plugged in all of the Gordian information as well. And then we're gonna start working on some scenarios, putting in, in place Peter Prada's projection, enrollment projections, our, our budget numbers and then how we think the state's gonna look at these reimbursements. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Dr. Ritten.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of information there to digest there. Remember, there's, there's no such thing as a foolish question. Please, that was a, a lot of really important information. If, if anybody needs clarification or would like our friends from Friar to, to expand on anything, please ask. Lauren?
I'm just wondering if we could please have a copy of that presentation. That would be great.
That's a lot to absorb. It's a lot of math.
So I have a question. When we are talking about having square footage over what we would be allowed to have in the future, can you just talk about how we ended up with all the square footage that we did? Was it reimbursable rates when the schools were built? Was it based, it must have been based on projections for enrollment back in the 50s or 60s. But would we be, are we, so some of the buildings are really crowded right now. Valley View is, is pretty much filled to the seams with students and offices and teachers and things. So you're saying, if I heard, heard you correctly, we have, we would be getting less space in a newer building for, let's say, Valley View. Is that, is that what I heard? Charles is frowning, but is that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to, I'm not sure that Friar would, would be able to answer the question how we arrived, right? I mean, they're, they're sort of coming in and doing the analysis of where we are now. I don't know that they have the historical perspectives. Certainly, everybody, many are likely aware of what happened with the last construction and an overestimate of the enrollment and how the, the secondary school was overbuilt and that, that put Portland in a difficult position of having potentially to have some funding for that clawed back by the state. Again, these are our historical, you know, things that happened in Portland that I don't know that, that Mike and Bryce would be able, be able to answer. Specifically with respect to where we are now, and, and Mike and Bryce, correct me if I'm wrong, their analysis tells us that Valley View is not at, but definitely not far from capacity. Gilder Sleeve is not at, but not far from capacity. Brownstone is way under capacity and the secondary school is way under capacity. If you take Brownstone and the secondary school and add those together, that which, that is what comprises the bulk of the 175,000 overbuilt square footage. Bryce and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong about that.
That's correct.
That's what I didn't understand. That's what wasn't clear to me. Okay.
Can I ask, can I ask a follow-up? Oh, I'm sorry. Could I ask a follow-up question to that? I, I mean, I know 9% is a fairly small number, but I was surprised to hear that there was a percentage at all of, of capacity of that Gilder Sleeve, of, of Gilder Sleeve that exists. You know, I, I feel we're bursting at the seams. Can you talk a little bit about how you came up with, with those numbers? Like what is included in the square footage and, and what isn't?
The, the state spreadsheet that calculates the allowable square footage, it's you plug in the number of students per grade and the spreadsheet has a series of formulas built into it that calculate the allowable square footage for the building. So that's, that's how those numbers were generated. When you start digging further into it, there's an extension onto that spreadsheet that talks about, you know, how many students you have, how many classrooms you can have, the taking into the account of students. So, you know, we just haven't really dealt that deep into it yet, though.
Yeah, one of the things that happens, Ryan, is if the, if the school, you'll notice the more modern schools now have cafeteriums or gymatoriums. That's the direct result of this calculation that the state came up with, you know, 20 something years ago. We weren't gonna have cafeteria, gymnasium and an auditorium in a school anymore, any longer because they considered some of that not educational purposes. They were more civic. So that's kind of where this came from.
More of a recent conversation with the state, their goal is to make sure that every space in this building is being used full-time and there's not spaces within school buildings being built that are vacant for, let's say, 75% of the time that the students are in the building. You know, that's their goal.
Well, they're not saying you can't have those things. They're saying that they're not gonna help you pay for them.
That's right.
Good distinction. I, I have a question. When you talk about the, the overage of space we have now, the extra, I'll call it extra square footage. I'm sure there's a better term. One of the things that there's been talked about over the years is, is repurposing some spaces presently schools. And if we, if, is it possible for that to be part of the plan? Does that retirement of that or repurposing of that space change the picture for the square footage? Or are we kind of stuck out of the gate with this is our square footage and that's what we have to, to work with?
No, I think that, that we're just kind of going through how the state sees the reimbursement. We're gonna go through a series of, of projections into scenarios and you'll see how, how that plays out with, with different, how different scenario, how this math plays out in different scenarios. We just wanted to make you aware of it. We took the opportunity this month while we were doing the existing conditions and, and working on some educational curriculum issues with, with the board to kind of go over how the state reimburses projects to just kind of remind everybody who, who's seen it before and, and to show you guys how it works if you haven't seen it before.
Great. Thank you.
Are you able to give any idea as to the difference in the amount that would be eligible for reimbursement from the Gordian Report if we were doing a renovate as new project versus the the other one?
No, that's, that's the crux of it. So in the Gordian Report, if you just did an alterations project in it, it, it looked to be about four, four and a half million out of the 28 million would be eligible for reimbursement. If you did a renovate is new, it would all become eligible except for the space standards issue. And, and off-site things. So, so in that report, you've had a lot of, you know, your ceiling replacements, tile replacements, painting, all of that stuff ineligible as an alteration, eligible as renovate is new. But one of the tricks with that is that you have to bring everything in that building up to a 20-year so you gotta touch stuff that you wouldn't have to touch. So it might be a $28 million project as an alteration. It might be a $50 million project as a renovation, but they're gonna reimburse all of your eligible costs on the 50 million and not on the other one. So you, you're gonna really see how this plays out when we start running, running some of these scenarios. But that is the crux of how that works right there. The square footage is do work. You know, as long as, once you, once you come to the conclusion that, you know, you can live with a cafeteria or a gymatorium, we've built a lot of very successful schools with, with these calculations. So be confident, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get the right project for you.
Trust you.
I mean, well, there was a time when they, when they gave extra money for buildings that were older than 1950 because you, you notice some of those older, older schools have these really, really wide corridors. We don't have wide corridors anymore. That is valuable real estate right there.
Well, look, I'm, I'm noticing- Well, look, I'm noticing it's going on 8:30. Is there any other questions or are people processing? Otherwise, I could, could leave you all with the suggestion as, as you wake up in the morning and go, oh, I would love to have asked that. I think I have a pretty good process to make sure that everybody gets the information that they need. All right, so if you come up with a question, as Bryce and Mike and all of us sign off, my email is cbritain@portlandct.us. Send it to me. I want to make sure that everybody on this call either gets the information from Peter or from Friar so that, you know, you walk away from this with all of the information you need. Certainly, I will share the slide decks tonight with everybody on this call. Going forward, March, I won't say the date because I don't have my calendar open. The Facility Study Committee is getting back together. We're gonna do that in person. And we're probably gonna need a little bit longer than we have met previously. And Friar is going to come to that meeting with us, prepared to start really unpacking each of the scenarios that we've been discussing. I'm optimistic and hopeful that we'll, will meet the town's expectation articulated in the resolution and that by June, I'm optimistic that we will, will have a report to present to you. Certainly, I hope everybody's aware that things get in the way of that. I may come to the Board of Selectmen and ask for an extension. But right now, I'm confident we're, we're on the right timeline to meet our obligation to bring forward a, a report for, with a modernization plan for the, the end of the school year here. So we're adding in the right direction. And Mr. Prada and Mike and Bryce, thank you. You guys have kept us on track and looking forward to the next steps.
Thank you.
As are we. Thank you very much.
All right, everyone. Go have a nice night. Enjoy your families.
Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Good.